As Rick comes in, you know.
That's so sad.
Jumping on the. So I guess you have a special guest or somebody you'd like to, a new employee you would like to.
I would like to introduce Tia Donderman. Tia is our new workforce information and communications specialist. And she's going to be working a lot on our workforce board, VIO stuff for the five counties, but also a lot of workforce center with communications.
So I don't know if Rick could owe you this, but generally give a short speech. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Tia Donderman, I'm like as her resident. I have been my whole life passionate about Fairfield County. Prior to working at the workforce center, I worked at Fairfield County promoting the area to tourists and locals alike. Really enjoyed it there. I'm really excited to work with Rick and his team, just continuing to work and grow. And as a leader in the community. So previously I graduated from Ohio State University. I went to U of L for a year before transferring down to main campus. So when I was there, I majored in strategic communications, which was a journalism course. And I'm a minor in marketing and I have a social media study certificate. I just love this area and I'm excited to be here today.
Well, welcome and we're happy to have you. Then Holly, I guess you may have somebody we'd like to talk about.
Sure. I have Nicholas East on here with me today. We were trying to make room for everyone to sit down, but they consisted of just standing. But we have Nicholas today. He is our new regional planner. So we're very excited to have him on board. I'll let him introduce himself. And he did ask me how long his presentation needed to be today, so he's already prepared a question.
Definitely. Well, I'm very glad to be here. My name is Nicholas. I actually worked at Fairfield County before, at the county board, done all the disabilities for two and a half years. So I'm really happy to be back here. I've worked in human services for almost 10 years with folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities for around five. Master's of urban management. He's found a new passion in this field and just really happy to be here. So thank you.
So I remember back.
Applause.
We were going to applaud you. But I remember back in the, when I was in the military, a good friend of mine, he would, he said he did planning. He was, he was a planner and I had no idea what, and I've learned a lot about what great work you guys do. And so very happy to have you join our team. Thank you.
Happy to be here.
Thank you.
And he does have, I think, scooted off to employee orientation.
One additional seat now. So. So we have a retirement recognition.
We'll throw it to Cory Clark.
Yeah, why not Cory?
Yes, we have Annette Nash with us who spent 31 years with JFS in the finance department. And Annette has the distinction of having worked under seven different finance directors in those 31 years. Several of them are here and learning with us today. And during those times, she actually played a significant role in training some of those finance directors that, that were coming into their roles new. So I guess the best way that I can think of to describe Annette and her time with us is that she was really being glued and held together, the finance team. She was the one who everybody would go to when they didn't know how to do something or there was a report that they needed to look at or something needed coded in. She always had that historical knowledge and was very willing to share that. So it's going to be quite a challenge for us to move on without Annette, but at the same time, we're very excited for her and her next factor. And we wish her very well. And I think Dr. Brown might have a couple of words that she'd like to say as well.
Thank you, Annette, for your longtime service, for your problem solving abilities, for your loyalty to JFS, for your loyalty to your teammates. We wish you health, happiness and friendship always. You're just a tremendous employee. We're going to miss you.
So Annette, if you wouldn't mind coming down, please, and we have a little presentation for you.
And Annette's giving extended beyond even JFS. When another department needed help or assistance, she was always willing to lend a hand and help them with, with processing. And you were a true gift. Thank you, Annette.
Since they're joining us, will it maybe take your truth, celebrate this movement with Rick? Fairfield County boosters, recognition, dedication and many contributions to countless successful jobs in services audits and training of specialists, assistants, county organizations, such as, and children personally. Also where exceptional work, perseverance, part of mental change, passion for fellow ways, willingness to share and store knowledge, who likes to rest in word, fellow ways. Our sincere appreciation, 31 years of service to Fairfield County residents, so I have one sincere. If you wanted to, I'd want to grab, like you say a couple more.
I started back when it was just the welfare office on Chestnut Street, if anybody remembers that. I've been through seven finance directors, like Cory said.
Would you like to bring?
I've seen a lot of changes over the years, especially when we became a quad agency. When Mike Morelia诺took over and Ani came to work for us and Gary. They were all wonderful people. I've learned a great deal of stuff from every one of them. And I just thank Fairfield County for keeping me around.
We are honored to have a number of folks with us here today. First, I'm going to bring up Tony Adamage. So we're going to recognize international overdose awareness state for. Let's say 2024. It says 2024. Hopefully, no, it might have fallen away a little bit from some people's consciousness since what some may refer to as the peak of the opiate epidemic. But unfortunately, it's not over. And there are also a number of other drugs that I think have become popular or perhaps more prominent in recent years. We have a whole team of people and entities, organizations that fight this fight every day. You know, a few years ago, it'd be pretty common in remarks like this to say that we've all known somebody, friend, a family member, an acquaintance, that's been impacted by, by drugs and their consequences of their use. And boosters have been supportive of those efforts to try to continue to fight the fight and educate folks on, on these things. And we're thrilled to have Tony with us today. Wonder if you might share a few words, then when we get a chance, we'll bring the folks up here who are in that fight to join us recognizing this state.
So thank you so much commissioners for your support through the years. I'm representing not only the Fairfield County Adamage Board, but also our PART Coalition, which stands for prevention, advocacy, recovery and treatment. And you're so right. There are a lot of people that are involved with the opiate epidemic and just substance abuse prevention in general. Our overdose deaths for 2024 have decreased, which is a positive thing. Our Narcan distribution, which is part of what Project PORT does in the Fairfield County Health Department, has increased. In 2023, 2022, around 1,100 Narcan kits were distributed in Fairfield County. In 2023, 2,200 Narcan kits were distributed, which is awesome. We have also placed 75 nalox boxes throughout Fairfield County so that those boxes are available for anybody that might be Narcan at the moment. And we just ordered 25 more, so we will eventually have 100 Narcan. It's nalox boxes. So I just want to thank you to the commissioners and also to the PART Coalition members and Adam Port staff.
Appreciate you folks very much. And wonder if you might invite some of the folks that are joining us in this fight to come down here maybe and join us.
Yes, lockdown.
I know the faces of people that are involved, but make sure people feel included here.
The coalition is all about members of different agencies, organizations and community members.
Appreciate you folks being with us. Maybe you join us up top there. You're going to have me on the set. Well, like you like each other.
I think some of you are still sitting in the. Looking at Chuck. Okay, and over there.
One, two, three. One, two, three. The next proclamation we have is for child support awareness. So it's probably something that, that you folks haven't dealt with much. I hope you haven't. And maybe it's been some time ago. I do appreciate child support. When my folks separated and maybe, I don't know, 1967 or so, they made this deal that I didn't know about at the time, learned about it later. But the deal that they made was because when my father would visit, I don't really remember. Yes, it was just so stressful and difficult for everybody that they eventually made this deal where you agreed not to come around anymore. Or you're not to take child support from them anymore. And I just thought that was like the most horrible deal in the world for me, right? You don't get to see your dad in no new shoes either. This is a crap deal, but we have a lot of people in our organization who fight every day to try to make sure that children are accounted for in terms of the support that they receive from both their parents. And personally, that means a lot to me. So I appreciate your work. And I know a lot of other people do too. So if you folks who are fighting this fight would join me, I would appreciate it.
I want to just size the numbers here. We just recognized Annette for 31 years, but collectively, the years of experience coming up top here is pretty impressive. Anyone do the quick math?
Twelve over 100, I think.
Don't go down, Sam.
So Cory, I wondered if you would sit if you were supposed to be with everyone.
I would love to. Thank you, commissioners, for recognizing this important effort. As you were saying, child support is something that years ago, a lot of times it was just handled by the parties. They would, you know, come up with an agreement. They may or may not exchange any money and nobody really kept track of that. So that led to, not surprisingly, a lot of different problems. And so having an agency that is responsible for not only keeping track of all those payments, but also enforcing when the payments aren't made, has a tremendous impact on the children and families in our community. And over $21 million a year is collected in Fairfield County alone. So you can imagine the impact that that has on those families. So thank you again. And thank you to our management team here. As Holly was saying, all of them with a tremendous amount of experience. Kathy Hime, Kelly Shoemaker, the director, Patrick Welsh, and Sandy Bryan, also a supervisor. So all with what, 15 or more years of experience, yeah, 15 to close to 30. So thank you.
One, two, three. One, two.
Thank you.
So we have transit development plan presentation. We have Sophia online, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is Florin here, so to speak?
All right, I just, oh, okay, you've pulled up the PowerPoint. I have a slightly updated version of the PowerPoint, so if it's all right, I would like to share my screen. Is that all right?
Yeah, go right ahead. I think you should have permission, Sophia.
Yes. All right. How does that look? Great. All right, well, thank you, everyone. We've got about 20 minutes allocated to this, so I'm going to be as quick as I can through the beginning of the presentation so that we can really focus on the meat at the end. My name's Sophia Thornton. I'm a senior planner at Benish. I have online with me the project manager, Laura Everett. And let's get going. So we have been working with Lancaster Fairfield Transit on a transit development plan since January. So in this presentation, I'm going to give you some background on what we've been doing and also bring you up to speed on where we're at today. And at the end of the presentation, we're seeking sort of an approval from the commission on all the work that we've done. So just to give a little information on transit services, I know that there's been a transition in management of the transit services from city to county. So there is curb to curb service, which is when you call in and the vehicle comes to you, to your home, picks you up and takes you to the curb of where you'd like to go. That's one of the kinds of services. And then there are the loop services, which you've probably seen around town. And there are five different loops in Lancaster area that run hourly, as well as one loop that goes out to Pickerington via Carroll. So some background information on what a transit development plan is for those who may have never experienced one before. A transit development plan helps a transit agency to meet the community needs in an efficient and economic manner. So we look at demographic information, travel behavior. We do a pretty deep dive on the demographics of your community. And then we conduct a heavy amount of public involvement and outreach. We take this outreach to determine what the transit needs in your community might be and then develop a service and implementation plan. So really, this plan is a short term plan, five to six years for capital and operating purposes. And we did involve both governing bodies, formerly city, now Fairfield County, in the development of the plan. Something we like to just clarify is that a TDP is not a formal budget. It is not a legal document and it is not a capital improvement program, just to clear up any misconceptions. So as I mentioned with the schedule, we did start working on this in January and we had an advisory committee meeting in February. I'll talk a little bit more about the advisory committee meeting in a minute. But we're now in July. We're presenting to the county commission and we have a draft TDP document slated to be completed hopefully by the end of this week. Public outreach summary. We did a pretty hefty amount of public outreach. We spoke to as many people as we could. Part of that was the compilation of an advisory committee that was comprised of key stakeholders and agency partners. We kept this group updated throughout the process. And we had an in-person kickoff meeting with this group in February. So we came to Lancaster, we drove around the county, really familiarized ourselves with the context that we were working in. And as you can see, a couple of the agencies we had included are listed on the slide. Special thanks to Commissioner Steve Davis and also Rick Zabrack and Ani Cordell for being heavily involved throughout this entire process. We also conducted a number of stakeholder interviews. These were one-on-one conversations with the following organizations. Some organizations, for example, were neighboring transit agencies like Licking County Transit. There was also the private bus operator in the area, Fun Bus. We spoke to Job and Family Services and the Developmental Disabilities Board. So a lot of the themes from these interviews were that the services were greatly appreciated in the community and generally that everyone felt supportive of, of having transit services, that clients really rely on it, that users are generally very satisfied with it. Of course, there were always some suggestions. So some of the suggestions included a need for more collaboration with community partners, employers and regional agencies. There was a pretty strong push for increased marketing ads, education to the public on how to use transit and probably some redesign of the branding. We also conducted a survey. This survey was distributed digitally via press release, social media. Here's an example of the Facebook post that Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit put on Facebook. We had this open for about eight weeks, I'd say, closed on April 26th. We got 78 responses from the public and the themes from those responses were really that they wanted to see more service, faster travel times, more trips per day, more availability of whether it's curb to curb or loops. Some comments on making transit catered towards workers, a little bit on regionalization, teaching people to ride again, that education component, and then a couple of comments on adding benches to the stops. So when we were in Lancaster in person, we spoke to the driver operators and we had some really great feedback from those drivers. Positive working environment. They really felt connected with the riders and just generally enjoyed working there. There were some comments on, at popular times, handling logistics could be better and also that they would really appreciate more of a permanent transfer hub for when they complete their route. Maybe someplace to use the restroom as opposed to borrowing the restroom from, for example, JFS. The riders, so Laura and I were able to each ride a route. And so we spoke to riders kind of in the natural environment and they were so appreciative of the loop service, really focusing on that like this is their way to get to essential services. Very satisfied with the breadth of operations. Some of the things that they would have liked to see are real time tracking, for example, and a little bit more consistency on arrival times. When is my bus going to be at my stop was kind of the focus of the improvements. So taking all of that background information and chats that we had, we developed evaluation alternatives and recommendations for how to meet the needs that were expressed. So in order to contextualize all of those needs that people mentioned, we, we turned the comments into a list of alternatives. And in collaboration with the advisory committee, we created these criteria as well as in collaboration with the transit agency itself. So we decided that if an alternative, if a suggestion improves access for all, supports commute trips, is supported by stakeholder and public input, increases the ability to move people, transit capacity, improves passenger experience and considering cost and complexity, these pieces would all determine the prioritization of a certain suggestion. So starting off, this is just a subset of the very long list of alternatives that we came up with, but I'm going to isolate the first one because this is kind of a lot of information. So we have here a line item for increased span, which means that a bus will start running earlier or stop running later. Essentially, it will run a longer period of time throughout the day. And as you can see with each column, we've gone through those evaluation criteria that I mentioned on the last slide. And so a full circle. And so a full circle would indicate that it fully supports that criteria. And an empty circle, which this alternative has no empty circles, would have indicated that it does not support that criteria much at all. And then you've got the score column with a little green box indicating that this scored rather well compared to all the alternatives. So, for example, increased span, making it operate earlier and/or later would improve accessibility greatly. It would somewhat support commuter trips. It was well-supported by public feedback. It would increase capacity because there is a little bit more hours of service. It would improve the passenger experience somewhat. It would have a moderate cost increase for the increased hours, but overall would be a suitable, simple alternative based on professional judgment. So, we went through that same scoring activity for all of the alternatives. I won't spend the time to talk through each one in the sake of moving on with the presentation. But as you can see, we did our due diligence. We really evaluated every alternative that came up. And you can see with the greens to the oranges that some scored better than others. But I want to explain that just because something scored higher than something else doesn't mean that the orange items, for example, are bad suggestions. In no way does it indicate that this is a bad or unfit comment. It just indicates that based on the criteria we looked at, there were other alternatives that were more appropriate for the timeframe, for the context, for the aspects that we were focused on. So, here are the service-related alternatives. You can see there. Then we had infrastructure-related alternatives. For example, expanding the transfer hub or adding shelters. Those clearly did not fit our criteria quite as well as the service alternatives. Then we had tech and policy alternatives. And one that I like to point out, which we heard time and time again in the public engagement, was the community education piece. You can see clearly that that piece scored the highest in the prioritization matrix. So, we have all these alternatives. We've sort of prioritized them based on a set of criteria that we, as an advisory committee agency and transit planners, felt was appropriate. But now, in order to break this down even further and make it a little more operational, we've put them into phases or buckets. So, the three phases that we came up with are Phase One, transitioning to county governance. We know that it will take a little bit of time to adjust the operations to this new county governance. So that's Phase One. Phase Two is improving existing services, taking what's already there and making it better or getting more of it. And then Phase Three is to expand service offerings. For example, maybe geographic expansion or offering a new type of service. So, honing in a little bit further on these specific phases. The transition to county is characterized by maintaining business as usual, more or less, while the agency transitions from city to county management. It includes, this phase includes some rebranding efforts. For example, bus head signs. That's where there is a route that's clearly displayed at the front of the bus. That would be an example of a rebranding. And then maybe some marketing components, not super specific, but generally rebranding. It also includes some strategic planning efforts. I know that Erin with the transit agency and Rick Zabrack are working on sorting out some fun strategic planning pieces. So, that will be Phase One. Phase Two is improving the current services. So, focusing on taking what's already there and improving it. So, earlier-later operating times for both services. Adding bottom-of-the-hour service to loops. And what that really means is that the loops currently run at the top of the hour. So this will essentially double the number of buses and it will halve the waiting time, right? So instead of running once an hour, it runs once at thirty minutes and then once at the next thirty-minute mark. Adding weekend services to loops and Sunday service to curb-to-curb. So Phase Three, this is more the expansion piece. So, for example, some new route pilot programs, one of which might include a late-shift connect worker-commute program. And these are planning-level alternatives and recommendations. So, we haven't hashed out exactly what a late-shift connect program might look like. But we have determined, based on the public feedback, that that might be something of interest for a Phase Three. This phase would also include a facility or hub study to evaluate whether a permanent transfer hub is useful, feasible, and if yes, where that might be located. So again, this is looking Phase Three towards like year five, six in the future, fiscal year 2930. And then, this isn't really a phase, but beyond the TDP, like I mentioned, there are alternatives that didn't quite fit the bill for this five-to-six-year timeframe. But that doesn't mean that they might not be useful in the future. So, for example, new route extensions, a pilot to Rickenbacker or Reynoldsburg. They have these mobility hubs that are coming online eventually. Who knows? Maybe the timeline will change. So it's important for us to mention that this is on the horizon. In case some opportunity presents itself, then we've mentioned this. We've put it out into the planning sphere. And it's easier than to, if something were to precipitate, to actually follow through with that because it's been included in the planning phase. Some other examples might be like fair study, redesigned stop signage, and branding of the vehicles themselves. And so that looks, again, beyond the five-to-six-year timeframe. So with the implementation plan, this really summarizes the alternatives evaluation piece and the phasing piece that we just spoke about. So really, this is just a graphical representation of the alternatives that we talked about and when they're going to come online. So you can kind of see visually that it looks a little bit like stair stepping. So, certain pieces are going to come online certain years and they'll cumulatively fall into line. So, we take all these alternatives and we still need to assign some numbers to them. So we generate a finance plan. This is a planning-level estimation of what these services may cost. So it is based on real financial estimates, but it is planning level. So, as you can see here, we've got these bars. The blue part of the bar represents the expenses of current operating and capitalized maintenance services. So, blue is kind of the current cost. Yellow and green indicate new costs. So, for example, in this current fiscal year 2425, those new non-service changes include the strategic planning efforts being done by Erin and Rick. And then the new services, I believe, include adding an extra bus to the Pickerington-Carroll loop. And so, you see this kind of stair stepping of the costs that really reflects the stair stepping of that implementation plan on the prior slide. So, I've just hit next slide, which added this background color. And this background color represents the revenues. So kind of the pale yellow indicates the current revenue projected over time. You'll notice that the current service costs and the current revenue, they slightly increase year-over-year. And that's because we've inflated it based on the average inflation for the past five years. But you can see that they're balanced. So the current services and the current revenues should meet each other. Then you see this kind of gray space that has occurred behind the new services. And of course, that represents funds that are to be determined. So, that could be local funding, could be state funding, could be federal funding, could be contracts, et cetera. And just to give everyone a little more context on what this yellow bar represents, we've got this colorful thing here. So you can see that of the new services, a lot of those new services, cost-wise, are comprised of the double-frequency bottom-of-hour service on loops, the Pickerington and Carroll improvements are a pretty big chunk. And then the Saturday service for loops are also a pretty big chunk. So lastly, we have the capital piece. So this would be purchases of vehicles, really, or other physical materials. So, for example, fiscal year 2425, that's purchases technology like laptops. And we can see that in order to purchase new vehicles, there will need to be new capital funds to help purchase those vehicles. Yes. So, the next steps here today, we're looking for acceptance by the Fairfield County Commission. And we will then send the finalized plan to Ohio DOT to notify them of plan completion. And I think I'm right at twenty minutes, so I'm ready for questions.
I don't really have questions. I want to thank the team at Benish for this presentation and for the work you're doing. As I look at a number of the components here, some of them appear to me to be very doable. Within the short-to-medium-term time range, it's very doable. Some of the concepts here seem a little aspirational as we look at them right now. I just want to say, you know, I think over the last couple of years, I've interviewed approximately 500 people with some form of transit pediment. And what's dotted on the, as a result of a lot of the work that Benish has done and a lot of the work that I've done privately, a lot of efforts and initiatives have a marketing component to them. It's like a promo, add-on, an extra, yeah, let's market that. In this situation, marketing is probably more significant than in your everyday goal or idea. So many people who need transit services still can stay or find their options. Some of us can use the Hocken Daffy, you see the bus driver. And you can put that in your phone and figure out exactly what's going on there. But it's not well-known. The services aren't well-known. And in other parts of Ohio or the country or the world, public transit's a way of life. And here are people who actually needed very distressed service, their awareness of service and how it might fit for them. So, last thing, if I might, as President. A person or two, not many, have said that this stuff that we're working on is visionary or something. Not many. I don't really agree with that. Richard, it's more simple to me. What's the problem? And what's the solution? That's what we're trying to sort out. Yes, with a heavier emphasis on getting people want to work. That's another side note that I know Rick and Erin have been involved in working with. Yearly, all of the major employers at the county understand what their situation is in terms of getting their employees to and from work, getting their clients to and from their service at the hospital, for example. Trying to include all those folks in the discussion so that as time moves on, we have a product that is better known, provides a better level of service, always at an efficient price point. So, I want to express my appreciation to Ani and Rick and Erin and all two of others, too many to name, for the work they've done to get us to this point. I have shared with folks, am I 100% confident that we're doing the right thing here? So, we got to get there. I think we're doing the right thing. It feels right to me. There's a number of logic points to what we're doing. But to 100% declare that I know we're doing the right thing, oh, I got to see the proof. And I look forward to that. So, appreciate the work of Benish and the many people that contributed to this product. And look forward to getting the work. Thank you, President.
I agree with pretty much everything Rick and Dave said. Thank you. Pretty much, pretty much. One of the things that's kind of sticks out is you only have seventy responses per week period, which is kind of surprising. Maybe that shows people aren't aware of even what's available in credits. It's not a very big number. It's hard to get a good sense from a small number like that. Let us, Rick, and then I'll go, Erin, and Rick, what would you like to go?
Well, that's great. This is, you know, perfect timing as we took over transit. That Benash was already doing the study, which was commissioned by ODOT, so no cost to us. And kind of sets us with a plan moving forward. And we're looking at some other planning opportunities with some other grants and funding where we could dive more to the employer side and truly understand their needs, when shifts start, when their shifts end, making sure that we can serve as many employers as possible. Doubling up at certain times of the day, going out to industrial parks to make sure that we can serve as many people as possible.
Because of my thunder with the ODOT covering, is it 100%? This is in place, starting last year, and obviously they started in January. So, just wanted, you know, obviously say thank you to Benash, Sophia, Laura, great work. Commissioner Davis and Ani, everybody's, you know, everybody's kind of pitched in and has sat in on a lot of these meetings. And looking forward to Commissioner, to point, seventy-eight is kind of a low number. Even still, people have feedback. We'd love to hear back from you. That number did not include the other stakeholders that were spoken to. JFS, the other, so that expanded that a little broader. But anyway, I just want to say thank you to everybody, Rick, Michelle, for all the hard work that everyone's done.
And also thank you, I see Dr. Bull and then Anna Tobin here from Meals on Wheels. They were participating in kind of the advisory group as well as Cory from JFS, hope I'm not missing anybody else. But kind of giving us that perspective and information for folks that are part of that larger transit community. So I appreciate you guys coming today and participating in this. I think this is just kind of like the beginning. I mean, we're hearing this information. And it's not like, you know, love the Benish team. They've been great to work with, but Erin and his team have been getting to work already. This just helps give a little bit more of a roadmap on directioning and a compass under speed. But you guys weren't waiting until we got this in order to make some adjustments and continue to take transit to that next level. So thank you for that.
If I might, Dr. Ward, put you on the spot a little bit. You have a background of experience with transit that... You have a background of experience with transit that kind of spans the beginning to the end. I mean, you were president of Lancaster City Council when this was a you're now in charge of development of the facilities, which has a number of transit needs. So you've kind of been on both sides of this equation. I wondered if you might want to share a few words or comments about what you're observing here.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate the purposeful and intentional way that this has been undertaken, both the player and study against what's the transition from city to the county. My level of confidence they built, right, that maybe was higher than yours. And so I think we are headed in the right direction. To Ani's point, this feels like a great start. From a county board perspective, it's all hope that we can take a few of the things we've seen here and even a little bit about the expansion of Friday Saturday. The um crowds that are going to be added. And if it's a resource issue, Kilo, we're having that discussion about how we can be more helpful in trying to provide some resources to make these things happen. I agree with what's been suggested already, this is a great start to I think it's pretty meaningful.
Thank you. And then Anna with Meals on Wheels, I know you too have had a long experience with transit, transit issues. Of course, you have a delivery model for your own services. I wondered if you wanted to share a couple of words.
Send it to be a part of any you've done very comfortable and very intentional planning process. I've seen your needs. I stand very much appreciated as we see that unique needs of door to door for getting them to offer but also socialization. So I think with the expansion of the loops and services, we could address those needs more accurately. Getting to charged socialization opportunities as well. We've always supported the kinds of common transit efforts to provide that expectation for those. And we are willing to also offer that same support.
I appreciate y'all's willingness to serve with us and trying to take this through the way, the beginning. And there's so much to do and I think so much to go forward to. But we're going to take our optimism and temperament with the refuge of the hard work that lies ahead. The time it probably will take us to make some of the improvements that we agree, Dr. Roy, important. We have had conversations about that timeline and when and at what price. Don't get too far ahead of ourselves on that. We're fully aware of it, that there's probably an expectation out there. We are the dog that caught the car, what we're going to do with it. See, thank you, Mr. President.
So another comment regarding whether I think this is the right thing or I'm not totally sure. 100% sure this is the right thing to have done. When I first became Commissioner, I, one of the things that caught my attention was that Lancaster City had transit and very good county throughout the county did not. And I think that was a shortcoming on prior mission members that they didn't actually take up that mantle and provide that service when it was when it was needed. But I think especially with the leadership of Commissioner Davis, we're getting to that point that where we should have been 12 years ago or even longer. So Sophie, any additional comments before we close?
No, I suppose just another comment on the seventy eight responses we received. Just anecdotally, well, it's not really anecdotally. Research suggests that survey response rates are down across all industries. We also did not offer like an incentive. Sometimes incentives increase the response rate, you know, for example, a raffle of a $10 gift card or something like that. So it's actually on par with what we've seen for the size of your community, that response rate. So just a comment on the response rate. And then to kind of wrap it up, this is a planning document, so it's a guideline. I know that we're talking a lot about the timing and the phasing. Again, this is a guideline, so if it doesn't quite work out exactly as we've laid it out here, it's no issue. It's really a case of you can't work towards something if you haven't written it down anywhere and put it on paper. It's a lot easier to work towards something when you have done that. So that's really what this framework is for operationally. So that's my final piece.
Well, thank you for all your good work on that. You know, it's given us a lot to look at and think about some of the things that we maybe hadn't even thought about. So consequently, we'll ever consider that for future planning. But thank you, thank you.
And just recognize Michelle McFady here, she's Assistant Director, is that the correct title, sorry? And her role in all of this as well. Michelle has been great through the transition and appreciate all that you do for transit.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to
Thank you, Sophia and Laura.
You're welcome.
Move on to Bart Hanson with budget review, Bart?
Very much. First thing I want to say real quick. I just want to say a few things. I got to work with Annette for about seven years and there's a lot of great things about her. She was a wonderful, top of the line analyst. And that stayed late as we worked through problems, as we found, tried to find solutions to issues that we were having. She was working a weekend here and there when we needed her. She stepped in to help other organizations. It just took a lot of skill, a lot of time and a lot of care in the work that she did. And most important thing I want to say about that is you care. You cared about the staff, you cared about our people, our customers. There were times when things were going wrong and one of the first things she would say when we lose funding, for example, is what about the people? What about them? Just want to thank her for her, for just caring about the work that we do and being there every day dedicated to getting the work done. Thank you, Annette.
And we're kind of the dynamic duo.
So so Annette, it's not too late to change your mind.
And that kept me out of a lot of trouble. She'd come to me and say, you might not want to do that. So I really appreciate that. All right, so let's move on to the second quarter budget presentation results. This presentation will be the review of the 2024 second quarter results for our financial analysis and reporting. Our general fund revenue and expenses. We'll touch on sales tax and we'll review the 2025 budget deadlines that are coming up and open up any questions at the station. This chart represents the forecast for the 2024 with actuals, January through June and forecast, July through December. What is not included in these numbers is an increase in the investment earnings revenue and the capital investments that are changing from 2025 to 2024. These changes will happen in the next presentation we do for the third quarter review. For the June forecasts, revenue is currently forecasted $65.5 million and expenses are forecasted at $63.4 million with our total revenue and expenses projected at $2.1 million to the good. Our current carryover cash is projected up about $1.4 million from $39.3 million in 2023 to an estimated $40.8 million through June of 2024. We'll review these details later on in the presentation. Now let's move on to the financial trend analysis. As we discussed last quarter, our timing of property tax revenue changed in 2024 in the first half settlements that processed in April versus March. As expected, the 2024 property tax revenue processed in April and the summary of the second quarter is now an apples to apples comparison for the second quarter. Overall, our revenue is up $2.6 million, we're 7.7% year over year. And our June through June expenses are up about $1 million at 3.2%. Please note that there is a spike there in in December in our trends. This spike represents timing of expenses that we're holding. We're not sure exactly when those expenses are going to hit, so we're holding them in December to make sure we're accounting for those. Those expenses change as the year goes on. That number will continue to go down as they are used throughout 2024. We continue to monitor our finances by analyzing our actuals to date and estimating forecasts to ensure we stay within target of our financial goals. As I stated earlier, the county cash balance is estimated at $40.8 million for the second quarter. We will continue to monitor this cash balance as we know more about the impacts of both revenue and expenses as things change throughout 2024. Now let's move on to the second quarter revenue results. Before we discuss the 2024 revenue results, I'm again providing explanations to the revenue categories. This chart has helped to create everyone, was created to help everyone see what is included in the revenue categories. We currently have ninety six separate revenue objects that have been summarized into ten different revenue categories. Our current revenue shows an increase of $2.6 million in the second, over the second quarter of 2023. The increase is mainly driven by a 2.5 investment earnings revenue increase over the 2023 results. We will discuss more of these details in the next few slides.
Your revenues year to date. So that 1178489
Yes, sir.
That's already booked?
Yes, sir.
And there's presumably that 2023 number, it doesn't look right to me.
These are June through June, if that's not mistaken. These wouldn't be the total amount.
Look at the 2023 year to date number, that's just the June 30.
Correct, that's Q through June for 2023 and then Q through June for 2024.
I didn't understand that, thank you.
Welcome to This chart represents the second quarter percentage of total revenue by category, which results in sales tax coming in about 40.8% for 2024 versus a 44.8% for 2023. Property tax came in at 21.2% in 2024 versus 22.4% for the prior year. Both revenue line items percentages have been driven down by the increased percentage of investment earnings. As a percent of total overall mix of the revenue for 2024 investment earnings, they were up, we were up fourteen, from 14.2% down, or up 14.2% versus 7.9% for 2023. So that mix of earned income has messed with that mix a little bit, but still a good thing. Moving on to the revenue highlights, as you can see from the above chart, 2024 second quarter revenue came in about $35.8 million to the versus the prior year, $33.2 million. That equates to around a $2.6 million higher than previous year. Increases were the result of investment earnings up $2.5 million. Fees and charging services up $521,000 and property tax was up around $160,000. Year over year decreases were the result of jail rental income being down $300,000, sales tax down $260,000. And there was a slight reduction of local government and transfers in 2024. As we move on to discuss sales tax, you can see that Fairfield County continues to have one of the lowest sales taxes out of the eighty eight counties. Eighty percent of those counties are higher than Fairfield County and fifteen percent have the same sales tax rate of 6.75% as Fairfield County. Only five percent of four counties have a lower sales tax, sales tax rate in Ohio. As I discussed earlier, sales tax continues to show a decrease in June of 2024 with actuals coming in about $258,000 lower than 2023. However, our forecast model shows that we are only down around roughly $35,000 to $40,000 to the $30 million budget. The model is based upon a three, a five year look and it's going out and analyzing what we anticipate with the model anticipates that revenue being throughout the rest of the year. August and September are typically two of our higher sales tax months and we will know more by the end of September if any possible changes may be made to the budget. The drop in sales tax is a mix of reductions in both auto and non-auto sales tax. Auto is down about 4.27%, while non-auto is down about 1.1%. Now we'll move on to the second quarter expenses for 2024. This slide represents the expense categories. We currently have 677 different expense line items that have been categorized into seven different categories. In 2024, expenses increased an estimated $1 million over the first half of this year. Increases were driven by contract and personal services, but offset by reductions in transfers and capital outlay. And I will explain these more in detail in a few slides. This chart shows that personal services continues to be our largest overall expense, coming in at 33% in 2024 and it was in 32% in 2023 at the same time. Second quarter expenses were $32.9 million of the thirty one point versus $31.9 million the prior year for a 3.2% increase. Contract services increased $1 million and were driven by contract services and the Sheriff's Department has been invested in County 911 systems and body camera services. Veteran Services also increased relief assistance to veterans as Veteran Services is expanding more of their budget in 2023 as they, as they help and assist veterans. Facilities was also driven, also had an increased cost as technical and engineering services expanded as in 2024 did not have in 2023. We also had increases in personal services and fringe benefits, about a $100, $200,000 increase in material supplies. And we also had expenses that were decreased, which were transfers and capital outlet, which is offsetting that based upon what's occurred throughout 2023 versus 2024. This increase will probably change as the year goes on as we adjust to challenges we have with capital projects throughout 2024. Moving on to the 2025 budget deadlines, our first round of 2025 budget meetings have already been held. Level three budget entry access ends on August 28th for the general fund department and level four budget entry access ends on December 2nd for non-general fund departments. Any questions?
I don't have questions right now. I still appreciate the work that you've been reporting. I get it, some of these charts and graphs can kind of glaze over and say, are we doing good or are we doing bad here? You know, we're doing good. And I know that math numbers, budgeting is not everybody's favorite topic, but if the higher vice code is the single issue that you're most responsible for, Bart just told you what it is. Thank you.
I don't have any questions because you made it so clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't answer any questions.
I don't have any questions on this report that the investment income has been adjusted upward already following up on an investment advisory committee meeting is not 8.7 million, bringing the total general fund to over 66 million.
You don't bother with anything?
Nothing to add, thanks Bart.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart.
Thanks, Bart. So we've reached the time of public comment. If you wish to do so, please approach the coding and give your name and address. A three month limit will be imposed. Thank you. Who would like to be first?
Hi. My name is Daisy Bergstrom and I have Alyssa Wannasig and Sarah Fortner with me today. I just want to thank county commissioners, our county administrator for allowing us a couple of minutes to talk to you about an event that's coming up. So you may know all three of us through our role through protective services. But today we actually join you as volunteers with the citizens to protect children and the elderly, which is a group that we all belong to. Um, so Alyssa actually has flyers that I'm going to have her pass around to all of you about an event that's coming up that I want to share some information about. So it's our eighth annual Blue Ribbon Run to be held on October fifth at Victory Park in Pickerington at nine AM. Registration goes up until the day of the event. However, if you want a T-shirt, we encourage everyone to register by the beginning of September. As you can see, Alyssa, myself and Sarah are all wearing past T-shirts from previous years' races. I think this year's shirt color, I think, is a, a red color with blue writing. Um, so some important information, this event is really important to our committee. Um, the five K really brings awareness to the safety and protection of our most vulnerable population, the children and elderly. Um, also proceeds are really important. Um, the sponsors that we get for this event is really important as it goes towards Protective Services levy campaign. So what we're asking all of you today is to come out and join us on October fifth. Um, it's a great opportunity to come out and either you don't have to be a runner, but you can run, you can walk, you can bring your pet, strollers. Um, just come out and join us for the event, participate, sign up, support our committee. Um, we also are encouraging any businesses or agencies that would be interested in sponsoring our event to sponsor. We have all different levels, anywhere from two fifty up to a thousand if you're interested in in sponsoring and supporting our committee. If you have any questions, my contact information is on the flyers. Feel free to reach out. Happy to get you additional information and details.
Walk, is there any opportunity for like a pace car driver or anything?
You know, if you wanted to ride the golf cart and volunteer, I can definitely hook you up with that.
Kind of figure out a way in here.
So what, you know, obviously we love you guys at Protective Services and everything you do. And I absolutely, you know, sponsor. Plus that means I don't have to park or.
Thank you.
So, yeah. But, uh, you're all good, great, wonderful people. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Who would like to be, make public, public comment? Anyone?
Good morning. I can appreciate many of the things that were said this morning. Because I recently have changed from where I'm independent to non-dependent. And I know that it's not easy to do. We all like to be independent and do our own thing and we've been raised that way over the years. And now we're getting to the place where I have to go back to the beginning of my time on this earth. And I just pray the Lord give me the patience, the understanding and the knowledge that what I need to do today is not the same as what I did before when I was dependent. Not dependent, I mean. So with that thought in mind, I want to pray for the people in here that are growing older like I am already. And your time will be coming if you have the opportunity to live through to that time. So, Lord, as we come before you this morning, I thank you and praise you for the effort for the commissioners and the citizens of this community to look after some of the needs of us that are more dependent than we'd like to be. And so, Lord, help me have that understanding and work with those people that are doing this service to help us to do our part even in this time. And I pray this in Jesus's name that we look to you for guidance and directions and all that we have. And we praise you and thank you in Jesus's holy name. Amen.
Anyone else? Last chance, anyone else? Very good. Anything I'd like? How do you administration update on me?
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you to the prosecutor's office, even though they don't have updates regularly, I can assure you they are in touch with the admin team regularly to help us continue to move things forward. So thanks to Amy, Austin and Stephen.
Yeah, that's an opportunity to mention, as a commissioner now, I'm finished up my fourteenth year of this service that, that the commissioner's office receives from the prosecutor's office has never been better. We appreciate it from here.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, next week, our, our regular and review meeting will be in the evening. So that's August sixth, next Tuesday, seven PM. And we will hold that at the Wigwam Event Center in Pickerington. So everybody make note of that. Today does begin the expanded sales tax holiday that was authorized in the state operating budget and that will run through eleven fifty nine PM on Thursday, August the eighth. Uh, it's ten days this year and allows tax repurchases made both in person and online on eligible items up to five hundred. Uh, it does exclude alcohol, motor vehicles, watercraft.
God, I know, I know.
Tobacco, vapor and cannabis products. Um, an important part of this statutory language that created this expanded holiday is that the state must reimburse the revenue losses to counties and transit authorities that levy progressive sales taxes and the local government fund and public library fund. Uh, the state budget did set aside seven hundred and fifty million in a special fund for this. Uh, however, the language only requires the state to reimburse for foregone revenue in August. Uh, and it does include two days in July. So CCao is working, uh, with the State Department of Taxation uh, to try to make sure that those days are somehow included as well. Uh, they've not yet decided on how the reimbursement is going to occur, whether it will be included in the sales tax distributions in October or if there will be a supplemental separate payment in October. So stay tuned for that. Uh, and then once we get that, Art will make sure to make note of that in his sales tax update that he provides to you. Any questions on that? Uh, also, we have some pictures I think Bennett is able to put up there. Uh, so at the Fairfield Center, we have been able to add uh, an additional department, uh, being able to provide, uh, services there out of the northwest part of the county. So what you're looking at is the space that our maintenance team was able to do for our CPS team. There will be five staff and a supervisor that will be working out of this specific space. Uh, they're also going to be hosting parenting time, uh, for, uh, between parents and kids there. So that's some of the uh, you know, more homey furniture you're seeing in some of the pictures. Um, but this is a great opportunity to have those staff work out of that location to be able to provide quicker access to the families that they're serving in the northwest part of the county. Cory, Heather, Sarah, do you guys want to add anything to them?
Um, we are very excited to have a location in the northern part of the county. Um, I think it's going to be a great benefit to our families, but also our community partners. Alyssa and I had the opportunity to meet with Pickerington PD a while ago and had mentioned, hey, we're going to have an office space up here and they were like, well, my gosh, this is going to be wonderful. This is going to be great. So we're going to start out slow and then we're going to continue to build upon that, um, in hopes that we're really going to be able to open it up to the public to allow purchase of immediate services. We're really thankful that we have the opportunity to place that space. So I think it's going to be a great benefit.
Awesome. And I think the staff were eager to have that as a location opportunity, right?
Yes.
Not kicking and screaming, dragging on there. All right. Thank you. Uh, highlights of resolutions, review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals and there are twenty three resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting. Couple resolutions of note, uh, there's one authorizing the approval of the proclamations that you previously provided for Child Support Awareness Month and for International Overdose Awareness Day. Uh, there's also a resolution to approve the one-time strategic community investments grant agreement, uh, between the commissioners and the state. This is how we will be accessing the two million that was appropriated, uh, for the purchase and renovation of the Colony Building on Sheridan Drive. Uh, so very thankful and appreciative to Representative LeRae, uh, as well as Representative Miller and Senator Schaper for their assistance in getting this funding for us across the finish line. We're one of many. Um, and, but we're happy to be able to do that. Thanks to Rick, uh, and the prosecutor's office for, uh, helping us get this, uh, information process so quickly so that we can grow it down just as quickly. So, uh, resolution appropriating money and transferring it to the general fund capital improvements fund for JFS roof replacement and rooftop units. Anything on that, John?
Uh, we're still pretty fine growth building, uh, and we hope to be able to extend our warranty on our roof for a number of years, get some efficiency out of the competition.
And, and make sure there is air in the building, right?
Heat is the important one. That's the barrel that we're, we're kind of.
Very good. Two resolutions from the engineer's office to establish viewing and hearing days to determine the necessity for establishing altering and widening roads, bridges and culverts. These viewings will occur on September tenth and seventeenth with a subsequent hearing on September twenty fourth and those are on your calendar. Uh, thanks to Rochelle and the engineer's office for, uh, working that out. We also had one to place a, uh, to change the bridge load rating for the Greenfield twenty two campground road bridge. Jason, anything you want to add to either of those?
Nothing major there. Just, uh, the bridge on on Red Governor Lookout, we're putting that to nineteen tons. So that's cut in half from the worst emergency traffic. It's lost traffic on that. That, that bridge is set to be replaced next year.
Thank you. And then regional planning does have four resolutions, one for a notice of commencement for the Village of Pleasantville Ball Field Improvement Project. Two resolutions for the contract agreement with Spires Paving Company and the notice to commence for the Village of Pleasantville Pick and Lubre Street Project. And then lastly, a resolution to approve the final plat for section two, part one of the Southampton subdivision. Holly?
I wanted to, uh, just fire this contract. Um, that contract actually has some information in it that was really close to not too far out from today. Uh, but we've had a little, um, working with them on section three requirements to make sure that we move forward with that contract. And then also they are set, they keep getting into the paving work and it's all this farm water work that's done. And, uh, that work hasn't done yet. So, uh, we're going to need to do a change order to extend the date of that contract.
Okay. So anticipate that coming shortly then. All right. Thank you for that then. Welcome back from vacation. And then lastly, a resolution for the crew board with service agreement by and between the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and Bloom Carroll Schools for personnel and equipment for policing services. Uh, Bart, I'm imagining no more budget updates.
No more budget.
All right. Thank you. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Right. Thank you. The twenty twenty four Athena Awards is, uh, coming Thursday, August first at five thirty at the Millie Met Center. Commissioners receive the following correspondence, two press releases from the county auditor, the first day of July twenty fourth, and Town Auditor's Office unveils lodging tax webpage, the second on July twenty ninth, Title Auditor's Office announces tax incentive review council meetings completed for twenty twenty four. A memo from Dr. Brown subjects what is the single audit and looking ahead to the twelve thirty one twenty twenty four audits. The Fairfield County Auditor's wins of the week, a letter of notification from AEP Ohio, correspondence regarding industrial solar projects and the Fairfield County E News Updates Newsletter. That's it.
Thank you, Rochelle. That's all, Commissioner.
Well, Mr. Davis, a little bit of new business, just like I was saying. Wouldn't they do? So, uh, so, uh, the Lancaster Festival, uh, finalized last Saturday. And, you know, what an amazing that, you know, their fortieth year in existence. And, you know, consequently the weather's great and perfect week, so. Next year, forty first year. This president found high, please. Normally I get to enjoy multiple, multiple festival events for a variety of reasons. I didn't get to do that this year. But, uh, I wouldn't want my inability to attend so many events this year to detract from my extreme appreciation for the festival, uh, what makes our community better for their returning guests. Being new business, I do have no new business. So, um, sometimes, uh, things get put on our calendar. Maybe I will say, hey, Steve, I dropped something on your calendar or whatever. It's like, oh, okay, you know? And I don't think that much of it. One of the things that got dropped on my calendar recently, uh, for something last week was I was asked to be, uh, host of a Wheel of Fortune game and it sounded a little boring and I thought, ah, you know, oh, all right, fine, I'll do it. I didn't really know that much about it. Um, but what it was, was, uh, a Wheel of Fortune game, uh, for, uh, some juveniles uh, who are in trouble. And, uh, it's called a diversion program. So, uh, the judge decided that these, uh, kids would be better served, uh, by some treatments, diversionary programs versus being incarcerated uh, in the Maltic County Juvenile Detention Center. So, so these were the, the, the young people that were participating in this Wheel of Fortune game. Uh, and it was just a really, really powerful experience. Um, as some folks may have heard me share in the past, from the ages thirteen to twenty one, uh, I was in trouble, uh, by a lot. Uh, I was involved with drugs, not just marijuana, but lots of drugs. Um, I was involved in a tremendous number of vicious automobile wrecks. Um, totaled nine vehicles that I owned. Um, totaled thirteen vehicles that were on the other side of my accident. It's almost all alcohol or drug involved. Of the thirteen vehicles I totaled, uh, three were police cars. Um, and it, and but for the, the kindness of a number of law enforcement personnel, uh, judges, mental health counselors, ministers, uh, some stuff I did on my own. Eventually I worked my way out of it, but my point is, is that when you're going through that as a youth and you're making a tremendous number of mistakes, in your mind, you think it's over, that you think you can recover from all you've done wrong. Um, and you, you, you give up, you know? So having an opportunity to share, uh, and speak with some youths that are, that are going through some difficult times and maybe being a little bit of an example for them that it's not over, you can recover, uh, from your mistakes and perhaps go on to be not as bad as people thought you were. Um, it was just a powerful, powerful moment and I thank staff and folks for letting me be a part of that. And I hope in the future I get that opportunity to continue to interact with youth that are going through difficult times and maybe showing them that there's a chance. You know, this might might end up okay for you if you, you know, make some adjustments. So just a great, great experience. Thank you, Mr. President.
So I, I too have, uh, had the opportunity to do that Wheel of Fortune a couple of times. And, uh, you know, we have to be thankful we have a juvenile judge that's forward thinking because incarcerated youth is not the answer. Your deportation or whatever, whatever form is really the answer because you know, the brains aren't developed and, you know, they have a, a bright future for them themselves if, uh, if proper help is provided. So this is one of the things that is really effective and it's, it's fun too. I thought it was interesting because I always try to contribute a few gift cards to them because the winner actually received something. And so I took some gift cards the last time and, and, uh, the winners told me, well, we don't, we don't want gift cards. We, we want the things that are on a shelf. So I, I'm the next time I will find what's on the shelf, provide things there. So it, it, it's really a cool experience to see some of the, and very bright kids. My goodness, I didn't, I wasn't able to come up with the answers that they came up with. So it's, uh, it's good, especially I'm thankful for Judge Vandercourt here for good work. Um, so, uh, new business, um, this week we have, uh, the Athena Award. You know, Dr. Brown was the recipient of, uh, that award. And so, uh, Monday I had the opportunity to be with, uh, Jim Bonson and his family and his daughter is, uh, Allison.
Jim Bonson and his family and his daughter is, uh, Allison Bolinger. And Allison is quite famous, more famous than her treasure, actually. But, uh, she is a flight director for NASA. And, you know, that's, that's, you know, I've always been a big fan, going back to all the space programs, especially the pilot program. Neil Armstrong was probably one of the most famous people that I ever wanted to meet. But, uh, she has, uh, she's in charge of, uh, Athena Flight, which is going to occur in, I believe, 2030. Is that correct, Lynn? And, uh, they're studying things that I have a big interest in, like black holes and things like that, you know, that I have no idea how it works. Obviously, Allison's a very brighted. And, uh, I'm sure Jim Bonson, she's. I am very proud, too. You know, she told me the story. She had a free ride in Ohio State, but decided to go to Purdue and get a degree in probably astrophysics or something of that nature. It's just unbelievable. But anyway, I, I thought it was interesting, the Athena, uh, and she's in charge of that. Like that, anything?
No, thank you. It was fun having the family in. They all headed home today, and things are quiet again. No, no, we had a great time. Uh, as far as the prosecutor's office goes, we're, well, wrapping up second half. Um, I think working with the Prosecutor's Office, putting an RFP together for some additional services for electronic payments off credit cards. Um, really doesn't impact, uh, organizations, so the companies were currently using to process credit cards, but this is to add some additions. Going out and ask if anybody needs any changes, then we'll go ahead and include those in this RFP. It's additional, question, additional companies to, uh, provide services that match up well with software services. I'm typically used to use the future. That's it.
So Aaron, uh, that, uh, um, thanks for the page. Uh, one of the things that came out, I was, you know, I'm, I'm surprised, but I guess I'm not, was the need for a restroom. You know, that's something you probably needed to open the answer for, right?
Yes. Um, in, in short term, CFS is gracious enough to open up their, uh, their, their building there where the drivers can go in and use the restroom. It's a hurdle. Um, after four or five o'clock, they weren't able to get into that building to use the restroom instead, you know, final turn places. So we're getting to, uh, uh, the county transition, uh, and access to that. So that's a, that's a great bridge. Thanks for saying that. Yes.
So in the short term, that works, but probably we need to come up with a better solution. You're right. I don't know how that would occur. Lisa?
I think you.
Jason?
Um, so far, date opening is Wednesday, so we're, our fingers crossed that we'll come in and add below the engineer's budget on that. So, best of luck on that.
Dr. Brenn?
Hello. We are eager to review the responses to our request for information for the lot split application. We will receive those this week, so we're eager to see how that might be able to be implemented by the end of the year. We have, of course, the clean audit opinion for 2023. Right now, they're in the midst of the single audit reviews, and so just appreciate all of the cooperation around everybody up here on the table, because we know it's quite intensive. There will not be a time in which the single audit would not be intensive, and that's because of a reliance on federal funds. In 2024, both the regular and the single audit will be accepted by independent private accountants, and we'll be involved in that process of the selection. Just wanted to have everybody have awareness of that, because even component units, whether it's Transportation Improvement District or other agencies, might be getting something from the state auditor as far as a questionnaire. If you need help completing that, we're here to help complete that. I know that there are a few that have gone out already. Our partners with Tyler Technologies have really come through on a number of different upgrades with the price assessment and tax, full upgrades for the legislative changes from House Bill 33 at no charge. And we also have multiple upgrades relating to the SaaS and apprise resource planning, using those things a little bit differently than we've used them in the past in an elevated way, and really appreciate the increased governance of that partnership.
Great.
Uh, we did have, uh, our golf lobbying at last, start last night, I mean, versus first time I've even offered lobbying anywhere in most students, um, just do a grant, so it's free for all students. Some of them are former nursing students that want to get back into this. Others are, uh, pharmacy tech, and they're wanting to expand their skills. So just a nice, uh, nice talk.
That's very nice. Well?
Uh, fun little privacy movie event. It's pretty well extended. Check out that. Eric made his own replica Dorothy thing, the movie where the stuff flies out of the back. He spent all, his own personal, I thought it was kind of funny. Uh, and it's just happy to announce it. Well, it could not hurt, but take them.
Damn.
I think for my team, thank you.
Cory?
Good.
Please rise if you're able and be in the public, Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. See all the announcements?
Very nice.
So approval minutes for July 23rd, 2024. Second discussion. Thing that will, roll call, please.
Sheriff Levacy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Minutes pass two zero. The Commissioners, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 30 dot A, a resolution authorizing the approval of proclamations.
I move Commissioner Resolutions A, B, C, D, and E. Second, any discussion? Just, uh. No, I'm fine. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero from the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 30 dot F, a resolution to approve a reimbursement for share of costs for internet services paid to AT&amp;T as memo expenditure fund 2060.
Second discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 30 dot G, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated major expenditure object category for Common Pleas Court, Fund 2852, targeted community alternative.
Move Common Pleas Court Resolutions G and H. Second discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 30 dot Holly, a resolution to set a commissioner's viewing day of September 10th, 2024, as times listed for multiple locations, and a final hearing date of September 24th, 2024 at 9:15 AM, to determine the necessity for establishing, altering, and widening of various roads, bridges, and Fairfield County, Ohio.
Engineers Resolution D and A. Okay. Second, roll call, please, or I'm sorry, second discussion.
Um, it's split into two dates. The first date looks like it will be four different, um, viewings, and then the second one a little bit, uh, longer in length. That will include, uh, eight different viewings.
Additional discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero from Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 30 dot L, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated major expenditure object category for Juvenile Court Fund 2036, Ohio Department of Youth Services reclaim.
Uh, Juvenile Probate Court Resolutions L and M. Second discussion. Roll, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 30 dot N, a resolution authorizing a notice to proceed and notice of commencement to Nashvilleers for CBPG fiscal year 2022 Village Pleasantville Ball Building Project.
Move Regional Planning Resolutions NOPQ. Second discussion. Holly, I'm very happy to see we got a planner now. Additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. The Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 30 dot R, a resolution authorizing the approval of a service agreement by and between the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and the Carroll Schools.
With the Sheriff's Resolutions RSTUV. Second discussion. In, unroll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Payment of Bills, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 30 dot W, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices in Department of the Need Board, Commissioners' group.
Second discussion. In, unroll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for August 6th, 7:00 PM at the Wigwam Event Center in Pickerington.
Any additional items come before the, what is the basis? Not, uh, looking for a motion. Motion to adjourn. Second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye, we're doing.